Call a meeting order and everyone please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, it looks like... Okay, welcome everyone. First order of business would be to approve the agenda. Are there any changes, Bruce?
One change, Mr. Chairman. Under General Business, the auditor's account with the treasurer will not be presented today, but instead will be presented at your next meeting on September 24th. Otherwise, no changes.
Motion approved as amended. Motion second for approval of the amended agenda. All opposed and approved. We'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. What other comments, please?
None here.
Okay, we need approval of the regular meeting minutes and the board of adjustment minutes from August 27th. The move approval.
Second.
Motion second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills. Please, you're on the bills. I've got my questions answered. I've got mine answered.
I'm good.
Move to approve the bills. Second present.
Okay, motion second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ms. Brendan, do we have any personnel?
I don't have anything, but I... Do you have something?
Yeah.
I don't have... Other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, this is...
Um, I'm in the process of hiring somebody. I finish up interviews hopefully today and make a decision in the next couple of days, but you guys don't meet till the 24th. And I'd like to offer them the job. They have due two weeks. I don't... Can I hire them before the 24th?
That's Bruce's best...
We've kind of talked about it, the emergency hiring situation, Mr. Chairman, and I would hate to have her lose a qualified candidate, so you'd be essentially then ratifying her selection at the 24th if she makes one. And so you'd be deferring to her judgment, of course, it's she's elected official with her office.
And this is replacing someone, correct?
Yeah, Julie quit after 16 years. She just was worn out from the customers hollering and just arguing all the time and stuff, and she got a good job over in Belle Fouches being an office manager, so she was just... She said she was just tired. And I...
I guess I personally trust your integrity, so I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Do we... Do we need to do it as an emergency hire? Can't we just authorize the chairman to approve or authorize the treasurer as the department head and elected official? We go ahead and we'll ratify it six times when your next meeting occurs?
Yeah, yeah. Ultimately, you have to approve all the hiring, right? And so you can't take an action outside of a meeting. But so you know, you could at the meeting on the 24th take exception to who she hires, but you're kind of letting her know that you're going to have great... Give her great discretion in making that slot.
And I do background... I do background checks on my people.
I don't think we can do pro toot that, I don't think. It's a good idea. I like it. I think that's... Yeah. I think the idea is that they will hopefully be making a hire and she'll probably have that person start, maybe even before the 24th, which will be your next meeting, in that when you're presented with that, that you will ratify, you know, defer to her decision-making in that regard.
And then I do... I do background checks on the people I start with because, you know, we've got so much money and everything going that I tell them that their hiring is on... That they have to pass a background check and stuff.
Because otherwise, if I may, then you may be looking at October 8th before that person could officially start. And so, you know, that's almost what, a month or a month away.
So do we need to take any action at this point?
I don't think you need to take any action. Just kind of be aware that that's a likely scenario, please.
If that's... Okay, thanks.
Well, likewise, my case, if you say anyone else has a...
I'm good with it.
Extend our discretion.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
All right. Is that up there in discussion or are we to discuss it on personal treasures or potential? That's what you're doing.
Yes, that's what it is, Richard.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Any travel requests?
None.
That completes that. Sheriff Dean.
Sir. Good morning.
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 Quite brief. I have nothing for you today. I want you to have questions for me.
Commissioner...
How is the timing going up on the Hill?
I think it's going rather well. I appreciate you asking that question. Commissioner Erickson... Eric Jennings asked me that question two meetings ago. We're now at a point where we agree at the date. In other words, we understand exactly what the numbers are. I can tell you that the expected date to open the facility now is November 18th.
November?
November 18th. We... It started off... I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it started off at a date in August, and then the board granted them 30 days, I believe. Thirty-ish days would have been a year ago, so 2023, the spring of 2023.
Change order number two, I think.
Yep. And then the change order... Change order number four had a number of issues delineated. And if you recall, each of those issues in parentheses had a number next to them, and those were days that had to be added for them to accomplish that particular task. And we've done the math. We've counted the days. We understand how they count the days, and we agree that that's a legitimate date.
So if I may, so every... At the bottom of that change order number four, there was a list of all the change... Of all the changes that the county had requested.
Like, for example, the tower, the radio tower that we didn't quite have in, but I think there was some additional laser that we really hadn't processed.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, and that's...
That's well said.
I think that's what it was.
So every one of those items had a number of day or days associated with it. And so inferentially, by agreeing to the change order before, you've agreed to those days to allow them to do that work. And so you add... You add up the two sets of days, the weather days, the change order days, you get that date, right?
Subtract weekends and holidays, of course, and yeah. So we're in agreement. We've done the math. It's a good date. A little bit down the road from where we had originally anticipated. I don't see that as a problem. It's a big project. Lots going on. If we can finish on November 18th, which they feel very committed to doing, I consider that a success.
I know. It's still people September or something.
Yeah.
September, that's... Starts with that now.
Okay. Yeah, that was... That was a fair answer.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff.
Mr. May.
We're getting way ahead again.
Oh, we're getting way ahead here. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may... John, I did put in a possible executive session down there to talk to legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation. So as we discussed that last week, do you still need that?
Litigation or contractual?
Probably not contractual. Contractual is construed rather narrowly. It's not broadly contractual, so I think it would fall under consulting with an attorney.
Okay. There would be a contract involved if we decided to...
But we don't have that in front of us just yet, right?
That's correct. It would depend on whether we go forward from this point. If we...
Would you like to do the executive session?
To consult... I am attorney. I am willing to do whatever works best for you guys. I can...
Why don't we go ahead and do that first?
My commotion to go an executive session to consult legal counsel.
Same.
Okay, motion second to go an executive session to consult the legal counsel. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So for those listening online, I'm gonna mute the meeting and also turn off the camera while...
You'll have to leave the room, sir.
Okay.
No, you did it. I hope you just shared the screen is all. There you go.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we're back online. I did check in the hallway.
You don't have the camera on you.
To make sure.
Now, we've come out of executive session without any action.
And I didn't see anybody in the hallway. But we're back.
Okay. Did you have some language, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, looking at, as John Bay points out, Resolution 2114, that resolution deals generally with guidelines for the county to acquire permanent right-of-way or temporary easements and permanent easements for basically highway projects. Embedded in that resolution is discretion or to allow a variance to the amounts, limitations that are set forth. If the county commission consider that variance is in the best interest of the county and is necessary to accomplish the spirit and intent of the policy in the event that the highway superintendent is unable at any point to acquire any kind of easements or right-of-ways. And so if that is the case, if that's what Mr. Bay is reporting, you do have that discretion. And any motion I would ask be in accordance with that, those guidelines.
So, do we want to put the number on there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion to allow the highway superintendent to offer $5,010.
Correct.
For both temporary and permanent easements on the property at the corner of Maitland and Christiansa Drive.
As part of the bridge project?
Yes. Second. Camera motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Yeah, it's important not to hold back. If they're going to be longer, there's a lot of folks that would like to see that opened up. Yeah. Okay, what else do you have for us, sir?
Well, moving on, I got a couple of permits. Stephen Gold is requesting permission to construct a private approach permit. This is down on the Nemo Road, just south of the fire hall. There's already several. This is kind of an issue like we've been talking about in our master transportation plan. I did do some research. The property was purchased recently from a Janus Caberna.
Caberna.
The Caberna. There was no easement from that property to this. This property is a six-acre lot. It's been, it's been on the books for 20 years. It's a six-acre lot. It is kind of in an urban area of Nemo. The lot is six acres, but there's only 180 feet of frontage. And there's approaches on either side, 250 feet to the north and 240 feet to the south. So, his site distance is good. It won't need a culvert or anything like that. Being that it is in an urban area, there is getting to be a lot of approaches there, but it's the only, it's really the only place to get to this property. So, I guess for that reason, I think we have to, I have to recommend the approval of this approach.
What was the speed limit on that?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five there.
And I was just gonna say, the site distance is way more than those measurements I gave you for the, for the distance to those other approaches. The site distance is in the...
Five thirty-nine?
Yep, 539 to the north and 1195 to the south. So, the site distance is good, but it's still only 25 miles an hour. So, almost any site distance is good here. Yeah.
Okay. I move with Paul's, pretend recommendation on my other side.
I'll second.
Okay, we're motioning a second. Follow the highway superintendent's recommendation on this approach. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Okay. Last meeting, we had a approach request from Jesse Horstman on the Jackson Road. It was, it was your guys' request to see if there was any way, if there was any laws that we could use to charge him for the removal of his unauthorized approach. And we did, and I attached the bill. He did send a check or brought it in personally, apologized, made sure, he wanted me to make sure that I passed on his apology to you guys, said it wouldn't happen again. The bill was $455.87. That's where we're the cheapest contractor in town.
Motion to follow highway superintendent's recommendation and approve the permit.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're motioning a second for approval of the permit. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
And that's, so that is it for any kind of action. I do have one other thing, and this is not, there's no requirements as of this time. I do want to make sure that it's reflected in the minutes, though that we did on August the 22nd, close Bridge Number 4118111 on the Maitland Road when we opened that diversion. At this time, we don't have to send anything to the state with this bridge closure, but we will have to once we get a grant in place for that bridge, which we will apply for on January the 2nd. So, I just want it to reflect it in the minutes when we close that, so we can use that date.
Forty-one, one eighteen, one one one?
Yep.
On eight twenty-two.
Eight, yep, August 22nd.
Close the bridge. Okay. Thank you.
And I did find out on Thursday that we did receive that. We did, we were awarded the grant for that preliminary engineering of the, the bridge at exit two, west of exit two. We were one of the accepted awarded grants.
That's a $1.50 there?
Yep. So, we'll get rolling on that one and get it in the program as well.
When, when does that put it on the schedule for?
Well, about five years, you know, unless we do anything in between, but they can drag out longer than that. You've had them drag out longer. You know, we did 50% on that. That's not gonna guarantee us a reconstruction grant. We're just gonna have to see how that falls in. We might have to, you know, we might have to buy some points on that bridge as well when it comes time to.
Would a box culvert work there?
That would be, that is what's recommended right now. We haven't had, of course, a TSNL yet. We'll have to wait till they go through all the hydraulic study and everything. Then we'll do the type, size, and location meeting, and that's when we'll pick. But it has been proposed to me that a box culvert will be the replacement for that bridge.
They went to St. Andrews Bridge. It was on the old system for seven years before they got done?
That was a different type of a grant. That was federal highway, partial big grant and partial bundle grant. There was three different grants involved. That was very complicated.
But I think it was, wasn't that seven years?
Probably. It's like, oh, it should be next year. And we'll go over that in this five-year plan too as well, so.
Did you wanna, White, Whitewood Bridge? Yeah. Did you wanna have a discussion on, I witnessed it personally and brought it to John's attention, and he also had somebody else call in, the Celerity Project up on the Home State Road, that the folks putting it in or plowing it in are running their dozers up and down the road, and they've done damage to it. So, do you wanna?
Well, I did. I, I got, I got an email, a text message. It started out as Friday afternoon, I guess. I went over there at about 5:00 and measured the distance. I measured approximately three miles of evidence where they drove a track up and down, or tracked equipment. And then also, I measured roughly one mile of road that I considered that is damaged, that will need regraded and rechlorated. I sent an email to Celerity, the contractor, heavy equipment, and then the contractor doing it. I also, I received an email shortly after. I think I sent the email at 5:55, and at 6:02, I received an email back with their apologies and their commitment to pay for any damages done. I haven't, I haven't gone out to put a dollar figure to that yet. I roughly did it at home. I kind of put together a dollar figure, and it's probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $16,000 for us to regrade and rechloride that one mile of road, 14 to 16,000. I'll know more once I.
Around my corner.
That's correct. You know, chloride is roughly about, you know, just $8,500 for to chlorate tree to mile of road. That's what it costs us. That's what we pay.
They agreed to keep their machines off the road?
They did. In his, he said he would, he would make sure, he told them to keep their machines off the road. And I understand there's probably a few places, and I talked to you, like you said, you know, if you have to cross the road or move onto the road for a short amount of time to, to get around an obstruction, I get that, but they literally just drove it down a road for three miles. So, they don't have that permission. We don't give anybody permission for tractor.
They've got pretty heavy browsers on there too, you know, they can bite in. Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Um, yeah. Other than that, not a lot going on. I did wanna make, point out as well, we did finally get our last bill from Western Construction on our paving project, and it came in $43,825.92 under the bid amount.
That's good.
Nice.
We had a little difference there where we made up some money on some milling and things like that. So, we came in cheap. We have a pre-core meeting tomorrow at 10:00 on the bridge in Whitewoods. We'll see how that goes. I think they're planning on pouring the deck this week.
It looked like they went by it yesterday. It looks like they've got all of the structure up to do.
Yeah. So, we have a meeting tomorrow. We'll see how that goes.
So, you worked your plan. By Wheeler, yeah.
By Wheeler. That's another one.
Issues with that bridge.
They have, yep. It's a, it's a big bridge, you know, it's quite a span. It's, it's intricate. It's got a lot of, a lot of parts in it. So, they have had a lot of troubles. Their bypass is washed out twice. There's just been a lot of issues with that. Finally getting to where we can see, see some progress and hopefully get it done and hopefully get grading and paving done by the end of the, by the seasonal limitations date. We'll see. I think it's gonna be close.
You'll be back at nine. Yeah. Amber's on her way.
Well, we can't, we have nothing else to do.
Yeah, Amber's gonna come in, present her. Yeah, I can get that too.
Get five boss? Hey, Ken, if you'd like doing, maybe do this.
What's that? Yeah.
...
Yeah, they're just about burned up all of Wyoming and all of Montana.
Yeah, they're just about burned up all of Wyoming and all of Montana.
Yeah. They showed some pictures of that one.
And yes, Deb is here for, for ten fifteen, I believe, but if you're ready.
As you know.
Update.
As you know, last year we put our tax certificate on hold. And after they did some cleanup with legislature, I feel that we should just keep us on hold again this year. There's still some cleanup that needs to be done. One, they said that we, we have one year after we, after the county sells property and/or if somebody that picked up a tax certificate deed and they got deed to the property, they have one year to sell it. And we did, I did have a gentleman that got deed to the property. I gave him notice of what the new law is and stuff. They're kind of saying that the county's supposed to watch to make sure he doesn't stuff, but Bruce and I have talked. He's got the deed, that's up to him. But I feel that we should wait and see what happens with that situation before we sell any more deeds and stuff. And then there's some cleanup that needs to be done because in the past, if we've had some, some pieces of property that it's not really usable for anything, we surplus them to the city of Lead and/or Spearfish. And right now with this new law, I cannot do that. We have to sell them on the open market, try to act them on. And if they don't sell, we have to sell them again. So in this cleanup legislature that we have to do, we're asking how many times we have to sell them before we can surplus them? So that's one of the things that needs to be cleaned up and stuff too. So there's a little bit more that needs to be done. So I think we should at least wait one more year before we start selling tax certificates again.
You're just holding them all.
Is the legislature looking at possible more changes?
I've got to get a hold, I was getting, I'm on the task force with, um, with the Department of Revenue with Howdy Shell and stuff. And I know they've been busy with a bunch of other things that they've, with that legislature they had with divert and stuff on property taxes and stuff. So I know he's been busy, but I was gonna reach back out to him and see if they're gonna do some cleanup. One, on the surplus stuff, how many times we have to sell them and a few other cleanup things they wanted to do. And they just kind of wanted to see what happened through this year with, with the counties and stuff before they went back in. But right now, I'm, I mean, prior to this, um, new law, we had like two thousand dollars on my delinquent tax list. I'm back up to eighty-six thousand, but I think some of these will get taken care of, will get down a little bit. But I think it's in our best interest that we hold up one more year until we see how this new law proceeds.
No, I think it just continues with what your, what your decision has been so far. Deb is asking if you want to reconsider it, and I think the answer is no, right? I think it's very wise advice that she's giving you. I don't know if that's ever going to be a good idea to sell tax certificates again. Uh, it, it's really a dicey situation.
I mean, I had two people that bought tax certificates, one that was in it for the interest. You know, they made ten percent on their interest and they were hoping that people would redeem them, which normally most people did redeem them. And then I had some that was in it to try to get the property. The ones that were trying to get into the property, honestly, the way this law is, you, once you get the property, you have one year, you have to sell it. You don't get to keep it, you have to sell it, whether it was, you know, a piece of lot that was next to your house and you wanted it. You don't get to keep it, you have to sell it. And within one year, you're supposed to sell it and give the proceeds back to the owner of the property that you took it.
Thought process there? Cause I can see someone buying a little piece to add it to their.
It's based on the United States Supreme Court case out of, out of Pennebun County in Minneapolis, in the Minneapolis area, where the county there, I think, took, took tax deed to a property. And, and it was sold ultimately for much more than what the tax obligation was. And so the folks that had the tax obligation, they didn't get any credit for, for the, for the proceeds from the sale, right? And so I think that's the idea is, is that our legislature, their fix is to make sure that the property then gets sold so that any, uh, delinquent taxes get credited to the, to the first owner.
Right. That's just like if we take a property, nobody comes in and redeems it. We take the property, then Brenda and I have one year to sell that property. We have, we, before we could do it when we had a bunch of them. Now, once I take deed to that property, we have one year to sell that property. And we're, we're supposed to advertise, we're supposed to do everything. Then once we sell it, then if we make any profit on it over and above our costs, taxes and everything, then we have to return that profit back to the tax owner that owned that property. Even though they've had plenty of time to redeem it and do everything, we're cleaning it up. If they had any judgments or anything, we're making that property whole and clean and he, they get their money back.
But then the person that buys it has to turn around and sell it within a year?
Yes. No, no, once, once we take deed to it, then they get to keep it. If the county takes deed to it and we sell it, then those people get to get it. But if somebody comes in and like at my tax sale that I have in December, and they pick it up and they're holding the tax deed to it, and they get to tax deed, that person has to sell it like Brenda and I do.
So that the proceeds can be applied if any to offset the tax obligation?
And then if we can't find the homeowner that owned that property, then that's the, the other iffy part of it that we have to deal with, with the legislature. They're saying, we're supposed to try to keep track of that homeowner that owned it. And then if we can't find it, we're either supposed to turn it over to the clerk of courts or turn it on to the unclaimed fund, fund in peer for them to try to track the previous homeowner. Yes.
Yeah, we recommend no action, continue status quo.
I would recommend that for this year, we stay as we were last year and.
You could pass a motion if you wanted to.
Just tell me to stay status quo.
It won't hurt.
So.
Second.
We have a question in a second. Leave things as is under Deb's recommendation. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Well, we don't have a choice, but we'll have to recess for ten, eleven minutes.
Amber's here.
I thought that was a public hearing.
No.
No?
I don't know.
No, just an update.
Yeah, they're not here, yeah.
Just a quick update.
Okay, Amber, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, this is just, you guys don't have to review this today. It's just trying to keep you in the loop of where it's at. Um, this is the two open houses that are scheduled. Um, September twenty-fifth from five to seven and October ninth from twelve to two. So we tried to do an evening one and a daytime one. That way hopefully we can hit as many people as we can. Um, the rec center is going to work with us again. They didn't charge us and we're using, I think it's the same little room kind of off to the side that we used last time. It worked pretty well. Um, the only difference now is we have to go set up ourselves, which was fine, not a big deal. We'll go put some chairs and tables out. So, um, and then the Deadwood Open House is going to be down at the Days of Seventy-Six Road, the museum building. They have a nice meeting room in there. So we're going to be down at that one, down there instead. Um, this was the flyer that SE Group put together. Um, it will be published in the happening section of the Black Hills Pioneer. We already got that scheduled. And then they're doing two ads, one about a week prior to the Spearfish one, and then one about a week prior to the October one. Is kind of how they decided to do it with, working with the Pioneer. The links are all live. So if you go to, um, our website with the Lawrence County Future Land use map, we did a section and all of the information is now on there. And then this, um, QR code will work. It'll be in the paper and stuff so people can use their phone if they want to and just do it. And it takes them automatically to the website. Uh, the math link is on there. Um, and what we had them do, because it sounds like Spearfish isn't quite where we are withholding our public notices, is, would you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. So, um, they recreated the original link to just have it go to the county stuff. Because originally, the original link, you could see Spearfish as well. They've removed Spearfish link. Cause it, it sounds like they're just not quite as far along with that one. And they didn't want to confuse people, you know, with the two links together. So the county link has been separated. Um, and that's been updated now too. That's kind of where it's at. We're, we're not really doing anything right now. We're just waiting for these dates so that we can have the, the public input side. This was just the draft text. Um, so we meet, the planning and zoning board will talk about it on Thursday a little bit more. We've made some updates. They went through. And I think they actually did a pretty good job after the last round of discussion we had in there, adding some of that, breaking out some of the texts that you guys had asked them to. And then this is what we'll present to the public and, you know, kind of go from there. We don't, we don't know what's going to happen yet. We'll just wait and see what, what the public meetings do.
And I think it's on City Spearfish's agenda today.
Okay. I, I, they just, they, they didn't want to cause any confusion. So I, I told them it was fine to separate it out.
Thank you for the, the other, some of the other orders as well.
Yeah. So.
Did, uh, Mr. Chairman, did you have, uh, any other suggestions of place to hold the meetings?
Um, we looked at a number of them. Um, we opted not to do one down in Nemo. Um, it just, we didn't have hardly any turnout last time, so we didn't do one down there. And then, um, we felt that Spearfish and Deadwood were the best options that people can get to. So we can only host up to two. I mean, that's what we're paying for. So, um, the Spearfish one, we seem to have the best turnout when we did it. You know, at that location.
Couple of times.
Yeah, it, it seemed like that one was the best location. And then we've done them in Lead before, but I just thought Deadwood, at least it's on this end of town. Like if they want to come from Boulder Canyon or whatever, it's a pretty easy access and there's parking and.
Yeah. Well, there's no, I, I was wondering, after wondering, there was only two people there.
Yeah, it just wasn't. So we're going to try this instead. I, I was trying to go with ease of drivability. You know, if you're coming up from Sturgis or if you're coming from Whitewood or St. Ange, that end of town is pretty good. The lodge just wanted to charge too much. We've done it up there before, but it was like four hundred bucks. Or the other two facilities aren't charging me anything besides I have to go set up tables. So.
I had quite a few people at St. Ange last year, if I remember right.
Yep.
And I, I bet they didn't charge for the room there.
Nope, they didn't. But I had to pick two locations and I felt that we, Deadwood was at least, Spearfish is pretty close to St. Ange and Deadwood is close to St. Ange. Plus you got people coming from this way. Deadwood is pretty.
We, we can, we can get St. Ange people to come to Spearfish, but you can't get Spearfish people to come to St. Ange.
Correct.
Is it true too, Amber, that folks, if they can't attend a meeting, could still submit their comments, uh, either to, to your office or they could send them to me somehow?
I believe we'll have, um, a link. They're hoping to have it today where it'll like, you can go online and submit your comments onto our website. And then the SE group will compile, you know, all the comments, kind of like we did before. So it sounds like we'll have some, some way of doing it. We're also looking at hosting, um, maybe doing one or the other, the presentation part where people could watch it later on if they wanted to. But really all, all you're presenting is everything that's already on the website. So there's nothing new to present. It's, the information's already out there now.
So we can talk to a person or two in Nemo and think and pass the words around.
Oh, yeah. They've already, I've, I've already sent everything. Like I've sent, shared the link with people and I mean, it's out there. I, it's just a matter of if they want to come or not.
It's also true that you're going to present it, like you said, at Planning and Zoning this Thursday, and you'll have a go-to meeting link going for that. So folks could listen in and hear the discussion at that point as well, right? If you need to tell anybody that, that there's that opportunity as well.
And I've had people call me about it. I mean, I, I would say it's actually, people know we're working on it. So that's it today with that. And then the only other thing was, what else did I have on the agenda? Um, did I have the ETJ?
Yes.
Kind of a quick ordinance on there. Okay. So that was, um, Kevin, the new planning and zoning person in Spearfish, had contacted me last week. It sounds like P and Z, was it the P and Z Board or the City Council asked, gave him permission to start working on that, like actually working on it. Um, so, okay, both sides. I didn't know if it had gone through both boards. So he was waiting to make sure that they were comfortable with actually scheduling his time to be doing that. And they are. Um, so we are meeting next week and we're gonna try to, try to work on a draft and we'll see how it goes. But I, it sounded like the support was there, is what I gathered.
Yeah. Randy DiVer called the little powwow, Johnson, and Kevin, myself. Brought up some of the issues that.
He's having.
Spearfish should, well, yeah, Spearfish should draw portions of the ordinance twenty years ago. And such as doing a public hearing for a lot line, moving a lot line. And had a lot of historical information for Kevin and John.
Okay.
And John gave full, Kevin and Amber are handling this. They've been talking and we'll keep all this in mind. So.
Okay.
They need the two.
Yeah, I think, I think it was just, he was nervous to start anything till he had the full support.
So if I understand from, from DiVer's perspective, there's a lot of stuff in that ordinance that hasn't been followed. That it needs to be cleaned up either.
We just, our ultimate goal, this is my take on it. Now how this kind of comes about, because we have to look at how we need to adopt it, you know, all of that stuff. But I think the goal is, is to shorten the three mile if we can. Um, and have it be where like maybe three to two miles-ish, depending on where infrastructure is. We would just follow county regs and that's all we're going to do. And then where there's infrastructure capability and some of that stuff, you might have to have your more stricter regs like city oriented. So it's probably not going to be this perfect boundary anymore.
Right. And I think by statute, the city can exercise, but they don't have to.
Yeah.
They, they can opt. And it's, it's, and they're, they have.
From what I'm hearing, they're looking at areas not as miles, I want, one mile away. They may not want a mile on the way around because there's areas, they're never going to run infrastructure of the mountain place.
Yep.
Or these other areas. So they're looking at individual sites and saying, well, we're not going to do anything there. Pulling the backs.
I think, uh, how, how I gather it is there, we're trying to probably change that so it's based on infrastructure ability versus not having ability.
To really grow, future growth of City Spearfish. You're not going to grow that way. They don't really exercise authority. I think it's been your concern the whole time.
Yeah.
And, and the one joint meeting, you were there.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they looked at it like, we've got enough ground already in Cibulens. We don't need anymore at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of how I took it. So I, I think it'll be a good discussion. We meet next week for kind of our first sort of meeting, looking at some detail. And then him and I are going to try to come up with a draft of what we're thinking. And then we'll bring it, you know, and have to go to both boards and, and all that. But we, we got a ways to work on it. But I think it's good to finally have the support there.
I think, and I'm paraphrasing, state law says that counties and cities can have these kinds of agreements. But then it says, I think it shall be implemented, the agreement by a resolution or an ordinance or something. So kind of the dilemma is, is if what, what is going to happen is that we will, you'll have a map with areas on it and Spearfish's regulations will, current regulations will cover that area and the counties will cover the other area. Well, there's already ordinances or resolutions in place. So then the question is, is do you need to have a third ordinance that would basically say, uh,
Follow these ordinances.
Yeah, follow these ordinances. And so it may get kind of cumbersome. That's probably the safe way to do it. But we may need to do that and incorporate the math as part of that ordinance and then refer to the subordinances or direction in those particular areas, if that makes sense. So, but that's kind of how I think that will play out.
Yeah, I think when Kevin and I talked, we both agreed that we probably will have to have, according to what we're, we're working with Bruce and stuff, that we'll have to have an ordinance, but it's okay for the ordinance to say, we're just going to follow this. But we still have to pass an ordinance.
I think so.
Yep. It's weird, but.
We're at nine o'clock. Anything further for Amber?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Bay, would you please come forward? This is the time and place for a public.
Meeting.
A public meeting, okay, for the five-year highway and bridge plan. So it's not a hearing, just a meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, John provided you copies of the relevant documents, uh, to include the, what, ten-year graveling plan, the, uh, five-year highway and bridge plan, and then also we included a bonus five-year equipment plan as well. You should have all those in your package. I think I put them in the front of some of yours, in the pocket in front, maybe, if you can't find it. It's probably in the front, on the left-hand side.
I think you put all mine right here.
Okay, I can't remember. Anyway, you need it, we'll get copies.
I organize myself, so I, I know where it's at.
Nope, that's all the stuff.
I have copies here if you need some.
Mine, no, why are they all here? They're all here. They're all there. They're all there. I just worked off the copies you gave us on.
Yeah. I have the, the newest one. What I gave you is what we submitted to the state last year, if you're referring to that.
I may dig it out of your book.
But I do have, uh,
I can.
I do have the new stuff and I brought copies if there was people in the public that would want some as well. If you'd like one of them, I got it covered. Well, to start with, I want to, on the, the, the last, one of the last pages of, of my report there, I just wanted to kind of highlight the fact that the office of local government assistance, they give you the definition of what the five-year plan is for. I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of what the five land, five-year plan is for, like, as far as it's required, why it's required, and what it really truly means. The five-year plan is a highway, bridge improvement plan to be submitted to the state. And it's one of the requirements to be considered for any kind of grants. What is in this plan does not mean it has to happen in the order that it's in the plan. For instance, bridges, for one thing, once they're in the plan, we alluded to this a little bit ago, once they're in the plan, they are eligible for a grant. If we have them in the plan for a construction in a certain year, it doesn't always work out. It hasn't worked out very good since I took over. We have to switch them around a lot. Kind of tricky in the whole budgeting process as well. You're kind of, you're at the mercy of the contractor, you're at the mercy of the state when it comes to bid lettings and all these things. So just because it's in the plan, it doesn't really necessarily mean that it's in that location in the plan. It just has to be in that five-year plan. Okay? I'd also make note too, with, with any kind of improvements to paving or gravel or any of those things, none of those have to be in the plan, in the, in the location that they, that we're putting, putting them out there. If, if we decided we were going to pave a road and we said we're going to pave it in twenty-eight and funding wasn't available until twenty-nine, it would certainly could be moved. It's not set in stone that we have to follow this plan, you know, chronologically. Okay? I just wanted to make sure we all knew that a little bit going into this. And the same with our graveling. When I give you our gravel lists, our gravel lists are really, we don't really put our plan together for what roads we're going to gravel until the end of the winter and we see what kind of damages and what roads truly need gravel. What you have in your packet as far as the gravel list, that is just the historical list of when it was gravelled the last time. And then it just rotates. It's a rotation list. We change that all the time come spring because some roads are not necessarily in order to be gravelled, but truly need gravelled. So I wanted to make you aware of that as well. Now, Commissioner Sleep asked me at the last meeting, and I never really put that in my head until a couple of days later, because that's how I work. But you had made the comment that I see on your, your gravel list that you said you were going to cut back because of budgeting. What I gave you was what we turned into the state last year. What I budgeted for this year, we did cut. You know, we did cut from the twenty-point-five miles to, I believe, eighteen-point-two. We did.
That doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that because we did that after I submitted that to the states. I wanted you to make sure that, I didn't really quite understand what you were getting at till later, but I did kind of put it together. We did cut that this year. We are only graveling eighteen miles this year because the cost of gravel went up. We put the five-year plan and our gravel plan out there, but we opened bids much later. So we adjusted our amount based on what our, the bid amount for gravel was. And we'll continue to do that, you know. the bid amount for gravel was. And we'll continue to do that, you know, going forward. We've we don't have any intentions to gravel over and above what we're we're budgeting or bidding. So that would bring us to this project list, which we have to turn into the state as well. As you can see here, the the items that are done are just in white, everything that's highlighted is still either in the progress or has moved. For one, the Nemo Road applied for big grant for the big replacement grant on that. Both of those need we've moved that to twenty six because neither of those bridges yet are, they don't qualify yet. We don't, we can't apply for those bridges in twenty five. They don't, they don't score high enough at this time. We do plan on just continuing to move those down the list until they do qualify. The Maitland Road applied for the PE grant. We didn't have to do that because you guys voted to just pay for that upfront so we could get ahead of that bridge. Everything else on this list is done for the year. And that would bring us to twenty five. And I'm gonna run through this list. If you guys see anything in here that you think needs to be removed, or if you think it should be changed to a different date, this is your chance to say so. Asphalt mill overlay Nemo from the Tomahawk Ranch to the Old Ridge Road. That would be the third phase of our Nemo Mill overlay. Our chip seal fog seal of ten point two eight miles of West fourteen, chip fog seal of remainder of North Rochford and that half mile portion of the handle, which goes up to the golf course. The routing crack seal of numerous roads, Brookview, Brookview, Hillsview, Oliver, Westview Drive, Whitewood Service Road and the Whitewood Valley Road. Now, these are roads that we've done either recently paved and they are now for preservation, they need to be routed, track sealed, to be ready for a chip seal the following year or two years. Replacement and repair of culverts and bridges, regravel twenty point five miles of road again. That would depend on budgeting. It's just in our plan to do that much. I think we always added that twenty four and we cut it last year to twenty point five. I think we're getting to a point where we can even scale back our gravel anymore. Most of our gravel roads are really good shape. Striping of eighty five miles of road. We're no longer in a grant program for that. That's just added to our SDP money now annually. So it's just up to us to pay that up all all of ourselves. He skipped over the chloriding of hundred and twenty one and a half miles of of gravel roads. Okay, bridges. This is the this is the part that I wanted to talk about. This is the bridges that we have planned on doing in twenty five. And that is to replace the bridge on Elmore and to replace the the bridge one mile east of Whitewood on the service road. Still up in the air on both of those. I don't know. There's a good chance that Christianson Drive, I hope, and Maitland could actually switch with these. We'll know we'll know more next year. I just don't know where these are at right now. They're they're supposed to have been let. Neither one of them have been let yet. So twenty six to continue on with our Nemo Road asphalt and mill the next portion of three point six three miles of from the Old Ridge to Hay Creek Lane. The chip seal fog seal of the the Brookview, Hughesville, Oliver and Westview, those would be the ones that we the year before we would have cracks, rob and crack seal, the one point two seven miles of Maitland Road. Regravel ten miles, ten miles of gravel road. And I wanted you to make sure you notice that everything in this year is scaled back. This will be the year that we're looking at repurchasing graders. So we're trying to keep everything in twenty six. We're trying to keep the dollar amount as low as possible because we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be our largest outlay for equipment will be at twenty six. Again, with chloride and striping the same. Same with replacement of culverts and small bridge repairs. The construction of the Christianson Drive Bridge and applying for grants for the Nemo Road Bridge that we've moved forward. Twenty seven be asphalt mill and overlay the Nemo Road from Hay Creek to the junction of three D five. That'll be our last year on that Nemo project. These five of that paved one point four miles of Hill Street and North Tinton Road. And we put that on our list last year. And it can be removed if you guys still see. I would like to point out that our our preliminary traffic study plan, when he gave our last presentation, he gave us a list of roads that he felt qualified for pavement and the this road is on it.
What about doesn't taking good care of them with Magwater come into play on this? As far as?
Absolutely.
Because I'm I'm I'll just be upfront, I'm not I'm not agreeable with paving.
Okay.
That road, but that's my.
We can.
Hill Street. Because that if I could, you're talking about eventually if I look down the next way, looking at doing a loop.
That's right.
Hill Street to the top of well, to where McGuigan and they meet and then.
That's right.
That would be all asphalt.
The traffic study plan also shows it going up further up Tinton Road as well, my my average well up to where our road, our maintenance ends.
There's a cattle guard right up there.
They don't have to be.
I mean, against paving.
No action has to be taken at this time. But if your wishes are to remove those, I will remove them before they get sent to the state. We have until October the fifteenth, I have to present this to the state. Why are you a guest?
Typically, counties have been in the gravel road business and our current highway superintendent is taking fantastic care of them. The Magwater program has made some very good roads out there. I guess I just don't see the need to pave anymore. That's my own personal opinion. The rest of you can.
Chris, Chris, back in the day when you guys started the the Magwater, typically counties did Magwater roads very little.
And most still don't. Most counties were probably the highest.
A lot of money in magging. I mean, it was just I'm just pointing out, you've got to stay up with the times.
Yeah, that's low end. Yeah.
It's less than paving.
Well, I understand that. Yeah, I can do the math, but but I just to just draw a line in the sand that wow, counties have never done this. Well, we we keep updating our our lives keep changing. And we have to keep thinking.
Well, the traffic study has certainly pointed out some of the areas. Well, I felt pretty smart because the two roads I picked last year, they picked two, so.
In the past, you're at three fifty, four hundred car count. And now you're at seven, eight, nine hundred on some of these that aren't paved yet.
Well, down in twenty nine, I've added the I put Maitland back on. I know it's been on and removed several times, but I put it back on because it's seven hundred and thirty eight cars per day. I I believe was what our traffic count is on that end of the road.
Commissioner Jennings and then Commissioner.
Just wondering, John, say a fifteen year timeframe, how does gravel with mag compared to asphalt?
Um, per year basis, no. Well, we're on it. Okay, to answer your question the best that I can, if we do a paved road, paved roads are typically a twenty year road. I think with the proper preservation techniques applied, which would be route and crack seals and chip seals on a on a a regular basis. It's easy to get thirty plus years. And that is, I think, everybody's goal is to always get thirty plus years. Gravel roads with chloride. We've always been on a ten year rotation. Road gets gravelled and then in ten years it gets regravelled. With the the amount of chloride that we've put on over the years, I think that has stretched out a little bit. I think we can get more than ten years out of some gravel. But probably probably not much more than ten years. It would depend totally on the traffic count. Some of these gravel roads, the traffic count is getting quite high. So that's gonna warrant a little more attention to your gravel. You will always have to do the chloride on those roads. The chloride would be an annual treatment on those high volume roads. So the cost would certainly be cheaper. Your gravel, you know, is roughly seventy five thousand dollars per mile to regravel a road. And chloride, I'm gonna sell you around that eighty five hundred dollars per mile to chloride road. So gravel is probably still cheaper. I mean, there's probably no doubt about it, you know, gravel's cheaper than pavement. It's cheaper for a for a initial cost and then it's cheaper on an annual basis. Your pavement is expensive to put down, then your annual expenses are quite a bit less, but then your treatments are expensive. So if you chip seal a road seven years after you paved, it's it's a, you know, an expensive endeavor, sixty thousand dollars a mile. So it kind of is a pay me now or pay me later. If you got gravel and you're paying eight thousand a mile throughout the years, it equals about the same as what your chip seal is on a paved road. So your initial outlay for pavement is expensive, but your your maintenance is less from year to year. So I don't know if that answers a hundred percent of your question, but I would say pavement lasts longer.
So if if you can get thirty years out of a pavement, is is the pavement still more expensive than than gravel?
I don't believe so.
Grabbling three times is what you're saying. You'd be grabbing three times and and mag watering thirty times.
That's right. So I think if you you calculate those costs, I think they're very similar costs.
Similar, okay, that's theirs.
Yes, thank you.
So we had a really good discussion about this, it seems to me, at the traffic study meeting with the state, right, about this topic? And John, remind me, is it the highway department had sort of an unofficial policy? Was it four hundred vehicles a day ADT that warranted paving? I can't remember.
That is correct. Our so our traffic study people came up with a number of two hundred and fifty cars per day was what they felt was the threshold for pavement. Since I've been at the highway department for as long as I can remember, we've always used four hundred. I think they came back with a number in that three hundred or three fifty range. We we decided to stick with our four hundred car traffic count. I will say that most every road that's a gravel road that is within cities of limits of Spearfish is well over four hundred. Like I said, Maitland was seven thirty at the the gravel portion, the existing gravel portion now for the next mile.
Is that traveling the whole entire road?
No, that's just the north end. And I have the traffic counts where those break out.
In light of that, what was the the traffic count on the Hill Hill Street and Titten Road? What was that one? Was it over four hundred?
It was, yeah. Everything that was on the city limits of Spearfish is over four hundred.
And I just I just mentioned that because just for context of some of the discussions that we had that you guys didn't have the benefit of.
Five hundred and fourteen was the Hill Street traffic count.
You'll hear more about it later, but we've heard the preliminary results so far.
But anyway, so but again, we can certainly remove these.
Well, I just, my personal opinion, and now you've given me more to think about here, but.
Well, and as a reminder, you just say this, next year's is not even not even set in stone. It's it's set in wet concrete. Certainly, the bridges will probably slide one way or the other. Some of the some of the roads.
Absolutely.
And the next year is a little bit broader. The next year is a little bit broader. So we.
And as much as a guy hates to just take projects and kick them down the road, I mean, it it happens and it happens for several reasons, budgetary reasons, emergencies. All kinds of things can come up that will change this and can change it. And just because it's on here, I understand your dilemma. If somebody sees this on here, they expect it to be done. And that that is where you guys hear it then, I'm sure. You know, you said it was gonna be paved and now you're moving it back. And I I don't want to create that environment for you, but it is kind of the nature of the beast.
I think it's good to leave it on here just to have the discussion of nothing else. We can always kick it off if it gets close, I don't know.
I think I'm worried about paving that section or fear of continually being asked to to continue on with the paving project. Of the Titten Road.
The Tenake Over Maintenance.
Between this and Maitland, I'd be more interested to see Maitland that person. I mean, a lot of those traffic said iron creek so they can take care of Richard and 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 they're hitting a lot worse roads when they hit the cattle guard. You know, so.
I think.
They're used to it.
To my point, the reason that we had Hill Street on there first is if you remember, this was starting at the section of the road that the city of Spearfish was gonna annex and pave.
The big apartment complex was going in.
That's correct. I think that was the reason why we put that one ahead.
Well, this would make sense to me. It's kind of a similar thought process that Daryl Johnson talked about when he was on the board. How how Hillsview Homestead got paved over to do the loop to the service road. Well, this would do McGuigan up to the Hillsview Loop. And so it doesn't just dead end in concrete. It goes up and it does something, you know, so it's connectivity. I mean, I I at this point I can live with that. But again, just like I say, my attitude might change next year. It might be a thing where it's like this doesn't make sense.
It could very well change.
And I think that hill part's gonna be a little tough. Just because, you know, that bend where oh, what's his name? Thompson, Jim Thompson used to live. That gets a little squirrely and steep.
Well, all of these roads would be roads that are paved over gravel. They're not milling overlays. So there would be there would be some heavy engineering involved, you know, when it comes time to do it. We wouldn't want to just pay somebody to go up and put a four inch mat on on this without doing some hydraulics and things like that and making sure all the drainage is correct and everything like that. So a lot of things could change. But again, we have until October the fifteenth to turn this in. And your guys' thoughts are completely important and should be included in this. So if we want to remove or add, I'm a hundred percent with whatever you guys want to do.
I've always felt that the city will be the paving and streets and that and the county should be gravelled and that. And if you need to go something different than that, then you may water in between and that. That's been my philosophy. But I I think the most ninety percent of the county roads are gravel roads, should be gravelled. And and sure, there's more traffic on some of those, but it's just on night time or morning time coming and going to work and and that. As if us going to a structure or town or something like that, it's just it's just just going on the county to work in town. And I I don't, I guess I haven't felt that's reason has changed much in the future here.
Well, I guess some of us have voiced our concerns and how we feel about it. But like John said, this isn't set in stone. We can certainly leave them on there and we can remove them next year. We want to. It's all how the money plays out. So.
We can.
I guess as long as it doesn't.
I could get some more exact numbers too, as far as what Commissioner Jennings is referring to. I can I could do some more cost analysis work there. I've never really done it. It's all pretty.
But we're not bound to this.
One hundred percent not bound to this.
One thing we got to remember is that we're gonna have taxpayers, we're gonna have more taxes on the jail unless sheriff's office, unless less things change there. Brian thinks it's going to and probably it will, but might not too. And this is one place to cut or change the structure of a lot of dollars.
Well, in light of what I said, I'm okay with leaving it on there because we're not bound to it.
Okay.
Anyone else want to add to that?
I'm okay leaving it on now and we'll get some more information from John there about future costs. But I look at it as what's what's the return on the investments?
The rest of you?
Yes.
So no action taken today, but John will come back with some additional information to the decision that one of your next meetings, is that right? Are you ready to make a decision today?
Next year anyway.
I will need a document at the end sometime signed to turn into the state. I don't have that yet. I won't have that until until this, everything in this five year plan is finalized. So. I have to wait. I I don't have anything to, you know, to have signed today anyway. So this is just the presentation. I'll have something closer to the date when it has to be presented to the state. And that's when I'll need your guys' signature. So. Well, that being said, I guess just quickly twenty eight, again, another section of that road we just talked about. We also had on an asphalt mill and overlay of Upper Valley and West fourteen. A chip seal and a fog seal of the Crook City Road, which is the remainder of the Crook City Road that we just we just paved a section. So this would be. So this would be at the time when we would chip seal that whole set, that whole road. Uh, chip seal and fog seal, one of the, the first portion of the Nemo Road that is fresh pavement. That would be a preservation of the pavement we just did. A chip seal and a fog seal of West Oliver, Mineral Place and Winterville, which are all roads that we just did. Route and track seal, three point six three miles of the Nemo Road in preparation for the preservation of the, the following year of the track seal or the chip seal. Route and track seal, four point five eight miles of the Saint Don Road. Back to the graveling of the twenty point five miles. Again, that could be totally adjustable come springtime. Mag chloride, a hundred and twenty-one point five miles, replacement of, uh, striping of eighty-five miles, replacement of bridges, repair of culverts and small bridges, uh, the construction of the Nemo Road, two bridge on Nemo Road pending, uh, any grant approval. Uh, and then the newest bridge that's gonna come up into our system is gonna be the Camp Comfort Bridge. Uh, that is in poor condition. I have that down to apply for a preliminary engineering grant in twenty twenty-eight. We'll keep an eye on that bridge. It's, uh, that'd be the one kind of just west of the city though. Crosses this realish creek there. So that one is, we just gotta get that in the system once again. It's gotta be in the system, the, in the five-year plan before you can even apply for a grant. So twenty-nine, it would be, uh, I added that piece of Maitland, the one point five miles. I know that's been on there and removed a few times. Chip seal, fog seal, this, again, a portion of the Saint Ange and the Nemo Road. Route and track seal enough, the second, the third portion of the Nemo Road and route track seal that next portion of the Saint Don Road. Route and crack seal, three point five eight miles of the Acorn Ridge Road. Uh, regravel, uh, twenty point five mag chloride, one hundred and twenty-one, striping of eighty-five miles, replacement of small bridges and culverts, and apply for the big construction grant, the big construction grant for Camp Comfort, pending the preliminary engineering grant. I also have in here, and this is a bridge that we're gonna have to do some work on, and it's the preservation of the deck. And this is on the Yellow Creek Road. This is a bridge that's very similar to the West fourteen. The, it doesn't qualify for any grants because of its age and the condition of it. So, um, this is probably gonna be something that we're gonna have to either fund ourselves or we'll just have to keep, you know, keep an eye on it to see where it might fall into the, uh, replacement grant area. Cause it's not gonna, it's not gonna, uh, meet any of the requirements of any of the other grants. It's because of its age and condition. And then if it all goes well, we will have the construction of the bridge on West fourteen that we just purchased or paid for the preliminary engineering. And that takes us to the end of the twenty-nine, and as you can see in the back is all of our gravel. Once again, the gravel, this is just the order of which they've been gravelled in, in the last ten years. As you can see what would come up based on the last time it was gravelled.
Some of those could possibly come off with our.
One hundred percent. Some of these will come off, and then a lot of them are just, they just don't have a lot of volume and, and they might have, they might, they don't need gravel again. So we, we make our decision based on how the roads are, you know, the.
Some of these maybe ones that we're gonna go to no maintenance and.
Absolutely. So those are there for your, uh, just for you guys to browse through it. You can just see when they were last gravelled, uh, amount of mileage they were gravelled and the estimated cost based on. The estimated cost is what we estimate the gravel to be in that year. And at the end there is our five-year equipment plan, and I, you know, we've, we got the grant for that truck for twenty-five. So that will be the cost there. You'll see where it was, uh, the, uh, estimated cost of the truck, the actual amount we turned in for the grant, the amount of grant we got back, and then my estimate of the true pickups that we put on for this year for twenty-five budget. And again, twenty-six is gonna be the big year. That's gonna be the year that we have to replace our graders.
Was our last, uh, graders we purchased on the seven year or nine?
Seven year. Nine years an option. I don't know for sure what the cost of that is yet. It sounds like it might not even be available then. It doesn't sound like it's working out well.
It's always been seven, right?
The problem with a nine, it's always been seven.
Yeah.
Five is standard. We've always purchased the extra two years. And nine gets us a little more life out of our machines. The problem with that is the resale we're finding is really plummeting on those nine-year machines. It's, uh, it's not working out for the counties because by the time they get their nine years of warranty and they go to sell them or trade them in, they're not worth much, and they got more hours.
They've always done quite well on.
Yeah, seven has been working out well.
Yeah.
So I put the nine in there because it seemed to be the, the thing that everybody was going to. But the last time I spoke with a couple of different dealers and counties, they, uh, it's not working out as well as they thought because the resale is, is, it's not keeping up. A loader with a high lift, again, that would replace our, our, uh, our last nineteen eighty-five cat loader. And then another truck, some sort of an asphalt box. And then for twenty-nine, we just, we need to start looking at replacing some of our chloride equipment, so.
Have you replaced the big tanker?
The big tanker, yeah. It's a nineteen fifty-nine Froo-Hoff. We got, we got all our money out of that.
Pass on your warning.
I'm sure that thing, I'm like, what is this? Yeah, we didn't get a warranty for that.
What was that tanker, which was fuel or belt or what was it?
Five.
Butter.
Sugar, beet juice. Does anybody else wanna sign this list, this five-year plan, the, the public, so I can send it into the state? They require a.
I'm not buying anything, right?
Well, you know, I've been signing. And I do wanna point out that we did receive one letter from, uh, Mr. Gangler for paving the, uh, the, uh.
First mile of.
The first mile of Higgins Gold. Um, if you guys wanna see that letter, I have that.
You read it. I've seen it. Also, we did get a letter, another letter from Robert Eddie on would like the speed limit reduced.
He's gonna, I did talk to him, and he's gonna put something together and for a future meeting.
Okay.
He made a similar request about a year ago.
Yeah. There was another neighbor down there that did it as well. Was there not, or call?
I couldn't really find that one.
I, I personally don't think we ought to, uh, pay for first mile Higgins Gold.
It's not in our plan anywhere yet. Uh, I just wanna make sure that I'm gonna turn that letter into the state with this five-year planner. And I also have, uh, comment letters. If anybody in the audience wants to fill out a comment, you certainly can. You've got asking for any action to be taken today. You'll present this back to the commission at a future meeting for official action, right? That's correct.
All right, John, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
John, how many people are on there? John, John, how many people are on there?
Seven.
Okay, it is nine thirty. Time and place for a public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight. A resolution sitting that twenty twenty-five county budget. We will go through this, and then we will offer it to the public for any comments they may have. So Brenda?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we anticipate that you would take official action at this meeting, but at your next meeting, but you, you certainly could. I think Brenda has her utilities in place, but some significant changes you might make as well, right?
Right. Um, as far as the, um, I did, uh, run the utilities. I got them last Monday, so I ran those in. Um, the only change that, um, it did for the actual tax request is it increased the fire protection by a hundred and twenty dollars. So I have implemented that, um, um, into, um, the, it'll be for the, um, annual budget, the final. That is presented on the twenty-fourth, so, yep, so that, yep, and then we did get the, um, insurance renewal that came in as a negative three percent. That was very good, yeah. So thankful to all of our employees for their due diligence of taking care of, good care of themselves. So, um, that will be another decision. Um, if you, I, we can leave the budget as is. Right now, there was the five percent in there. I can go in and remove that. It's just any changes I make to the provisional ba- budget has to be, um, just noted in the minutes, so.
If the approval will be on September twenty-fourth, but it is stated as a public hearing, so.
Yep, so.
Is there anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak, speak to this at this time? If you do, please stand and state your name and address for the record.
This is where I come up, Brenda?
Yeah.
I gotta come up. I have a.
Name and address, ma'am?
Uh, Depp Tattle, one one three three five Nevada Road.
Thank you.
I'm coming as a county treasurer. I, I had a situation come up, um, after my budgets were turned in. We are getting a no, a new motor V system, hopefully. We're supposed to go live, um, February seventeenth, but a new situation has come up that they have, uh, sent out a memorandum, and it sounds like for my employees to get into this new system, it's not official. That's why I'm, uh, preparing for it, that to get into it, we have to have a smartphone. The smartphone is to get in, to log into their system. We have to have a code every day to get into it.
Each person?
Sounds like the state should be buying smartphones for all the employees.
No, no, my employees all have smartphones. They have phones.
The state's requiring it.
But they are having to use their phones to get into their work, to do their work. I, and I know you guys have probably seen in the newspaper what has happened down at our state B and B and stuff. So I'm thinking they're cracking down even more. I'll find out more when I go in September, but this has come out before what's happened down at B and B. They're, they're trying to make things even more secure down there. I know all of their state employees now have to have, to get in, you have to have a authentication code to get into their programs. That's what's gonna happen to us. To get into all of our motor, motor Vs, we're gonna have to sign in, get an authentication code on your phone, put that number in to get into the motor V.
Deborah, you're saying then that you may have to have cell phone stipends for all of your employees? Is that kind of the bottom line?
I think it's only fair, guys. We're telling them to go to work. They have to use their personal phones to get into it. They have to have it to go to work.
Would you be, would you be proposing the, the minimum, I think was it fifty dollars, I guess?
And, and I won't, I mean, I'll put it in my budget, but I won't use it until we have to go live with the system and to do it.
How many, how many phones are we talking?
Seven.
Well, thanks for the heads up.
It'd be an additional, what did we figure, Brenda?
It's seven at twenty-three oh eight per pay period. So I didn't, I didn't figure it out.
I think it's like forty-two hundred total for the year. So I'd have to add it into my budget.
All right, well, thanks for making this aware of it.
And I didn't know if you wanted to put it in the budget now, so I don't have to supplement next year. And I, I do know I get money every year. It goes into, I get money back from the state for motor V for all the work we do, but it's in my motor V fund, not in my personnel budget. So I mean, I do get money that would cover it. I don't know how that works if I could move it from my motor V fund and move it over to, to my payroll. I don't know how that works, Brenda. I just know that I have that much in my motor V fund budgeted there, but don't spend. I mean.
You could do that too, yeah.
You want her to add it for agenda or?
I would just wait.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Brandon? I didn't hear.
I said I would just wait to make sure it's an actual thing, and then I just supplement or take it out of contingency or.
I just wanted to give you guys a.
But I, I'm.
No, I would agree.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else in the body of the audience that would like to speak to this here? Sir?
Steve Thomas, eleven eight three three Nemo Road, Deadwood. Um, sorry, I'm a little late on this. I'm the fire chief for Brownswell Fire. And I've got something you might be interested in, pictures worth a thousand words.
Just budget or is this? This is our budget hearing.
Correct. And this is, we're gonna, we want to ask you for some money. If this is budget, I figured that's where that happens. What we've got, oh, sorry. Go ahead, everybody have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, what we have here is if the picture you're looking at is three eighty-five, right across from the middle of the ninety, number nine fairway and Tomahawk, uh, talking to the people at Tomahawk. I'm also on the board of Tomahawk too. So what we're proposing as a fire group and a golf course is we could run a line, four-inch line from the main line on the fairway out to three eighty-five and put in a hydrant. And the pipe is gonna, we're not exactly totally sure of the cost. The pipe's gonna be about two thousand. Hydrant, we're not sure about, and the dirt work's gonna be pretty minimal. It's a trench, two hundred-foot trench. The plus that it gets for the county is we have, when you leave here, you run out of hydrants. We're either gonna pump out of creeks, some dry cisterns, uh, that's just how we're gonna get the water to fight fires up there in that wildland urban interface. What this would do is give us a static during the fire season, uh, location for everybody in the county, all the fire departments and the state and the feds, whoever's gonna help each other in any fires up in that area, close to that area, have a reliable water source.
What's the source of this water?
The source is the well, Tomahawk well. Uh, we use it for the sprinklers and basically the sprinklers. So as far as the cost of Tomahawk, it's just the, it's not even a disruption to the, to the, uh, season because we would do it out of season. Uh, it's just a matter of scarring up the ground a little bit, and the water's out of a well. Like I said, it's no cost to the golf course.
Do you use a lot of, for any other purpose up there or housing development or anything?
No, this water here would be strictly for fire.
And it comes from, do you have a tank, holding tanks someplace there?
We have a deep well, and we also have a pond that we're gonna increase the capacity of the pond too.
I got a general concern knowing limited things about firefighting, but when you hook a pumper up to a four-inch water line, you can suck that thing flat, can't you? The six inch, I think, is requirement for a lot of the tanks, the bigger ones. Is there any way you can label that or a certain head on it that won't allow the bigger tug trucks to?
Absolutely.
Try to suck on that thing? It's like collapsing a McDonald's straw in one of their.
What you would do is you just put a four-inch, uh, since it's a four-inch line, we wanna go as big as we can, but not getting ridiculous. So we would look at a four-inch fire thread there, and anybody pulling up would at least have that. But they can neck down if they go to like, we use three-inch, but we wouldn't have a six-inch line. And yeah, you're, you're exactly right.
So I know in the subdivisions, that's where a lot of that stuff, they require six-inch to be able for fire, so they don't collapse the lines. Cause I, I could see some liability on that, but I don't know if that would end up going to the fire hole or?
You wanna be really careful with that.
Yeah.
You, you had a second request too, right? Just to.
Well, this was, this was for, uh, later on in the budget next year. I'm just gonna let you know we'll be coming back. But our asphalt front of that station is pretty much looks like a bomb crater right next to three eighty-five.
At the old, um, Boondocks, right?
The old Boondocks. That's our station. We don't, we get like nine thousand some dollars from the county that pays for a building and vehicle insurance, and the rest of it is donations. We tried to do a fire district twice in the last eight years, voted down both times. So how we live and breathe is donations. That being said, we have to save and save and save and save to upgrade our equipment. We just upgraded a piece of our equipment that took us ten years to save. So we could, we could technically pay for the asphalt. That's gonna set us behind on replacing our number one attack edge. So that's for later on.
Okay. What, what do you think it for a dollar amount of the line?
Well, two thousand for the pipe. The hydrant depends on the type of the hydrant. I don't know. Uh, if we use Mike Anderson, who's really close by, the Moe D. Moe on the trenching, that'd be very minimal. And it's, it's a back hole in a trench and then fill it back in.
Paul, do you have any idea what hydrant would cost?
I cannot.
What do you think, Paul?
I don't.
Thousand bucks maybe, max, if that. If you get it like a city hydrant where you have to, that's a little bit more intricate construction. Could be that.
And just for context, I'm not offering an opinion on whether this is a good idea or bad idea. And I think Paul can help me. Paul did, was there some fire taxing district that used some upgrades on some, something similar to this and paid for it on their own? Uh, was it Spriffish Canyon? and paid for it on their own, uh, was it Spiritus Canyon did something?
What he's talking about, did their parking lot.
Parking lot, okay.
Spiritus Fire has done what they call dry hydrants, where they put a pipe into a dam, suck it out of there, so they can, you know, drive up close enough without driving in, into the dam itself to get the water. That's always, I mean, there might be water there, if you get a truck close enough to suck it out of the creek. Spiritus Canyon was just doing that this weekend, I went and visited with them, and they were up on Hannah, the last house before you go up Long Drive, they were able to get close enough to creek with a, with a hard suction to suck it out of the creek.
Okay, well, this is something we need to consider on the twenty-fourth then, Chris?
We'll need some hard numbers.
Brenda, to add that back in, I think she's gonna need to know that sooner than later, right?
How much you're, you're asking in that.
Like today, almost soon?
Yeah, well, I, I wanted to approach you just to get your heads up, because I know you're barreling down to your, uh, end of your budget, decision-wise, so if the twenty-fourth is the next date, if you want hard figures, we'll have as close as we can get to.
Well, beat it before that.
You, you, you do have, um, somebody left in your commissioner's contingency fund for this year, and presumably you would probably approve fifty thousand for next year as well, so I don't know if that makes a difference as well in terms of not levying for it, but using some of those funds that would normally just roll over.
Let's see what they get for hard numbers.
We did a hundred thousand for next year.
Hundred thousand, okay, that's right, that's right.
But you don't have until the twenty-fourth for hard numbers, we need hard numbers.
Yeah, as soon as possible, so that I can, yeah, I mean, it depends on whether or not, you know, I'm not gonna put them in there until you tell me to put them in there, so.
But the money, yeah, the money, I think, Brenda will correct me if I'm wrong, that you have left in your commissioner's contingency, it sounds like it would cover this, but those money have to be spent this year, o- otherwise they would roll over into next year, or into the general fund, right, yeah, so.
So, I mean, that's an option too.
And, and does that mean, Brenda, it, so i- if they would come in and, uh, there's enough money in the general fund that the work has to be done yet this year, if the money's allocated to them? Or can the money be allocated with the work being done, because we're gonna run into winter time here pretty soon as well, so that might be a bad idea, right?
It, it would have to, it would have to be done, it would have to be submitted a bill to pay for it.
So it'd have to be done this year in order?
Complete.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'd be a scramble, but if we could, if we had to, we, we scramble for a lot. Yeah, that's roughly two hundred gallons a minute at ninety psi. It's gonna take a little bit.
Okay. All right, thanks for your time. So if I may, um, so, um, just make sure everybody's clear on the deadlines, um, Brenda, you need some information ASAP, is that fair? Makes sense?
Yeah.
Dollar a month.
Email it to you.
You can, you can email it to me, I'll give it to Brenda. Okay, yeah.
Is there anyone else in the body of the audience that has any budget questions? You see, then we'll close the public hearing and, and, uh, mark it back to the board, uh, I don't think we have to make any motion through.
So I think, to recap, I think so Brenda originally was thinking, was it ten percent for insurance, but that got lowered down to five, and so the number now came in at negative three, so five was budgeted, and I think at your last meeting, you were talking about a five percent cost of living raise, five? So I just, I'm just trying to recap where you're at when you left your discussions the last time.
Yep, and that's what was published in the paper. It's published on the twenty-fourth.
As I mentioned before, I'm still concerned with us putting a hundred thousand dollars in the contingency for the commission. I think as long as I've been on board, I didn't hardly use any of that money, and, uh, I'd like to see it reduced to, it was always fifty before.
Chairman, I can elaborate on that a little bit, the reason it was raised to a hundred thousand was due to our, um, additional lawsuits that we've been continuing to get, if that continues. On that was something that Commissioner Jennings requested, and it was approved to move that up to a hundred thousand just because, you know, if we have, you know, continued, um, legal, legal.
By more, by the same person.
Yeah, so you just never know, that was why it was raised.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, in twenty-six, we can lower it back to fifty if things calm back down, but that was the purpose.
Was it also, it, it used to be a hundred thousand, and it got lowered to fifty?
A long time ago, yeah. Yeah, it's been fifty for.
Long time, they haven't hardly used any of it.
We used it all last year.
Did we?
Yeah, because we had that special election, so, and we used it for something else, but I can't remember.
For some of the tower money.
Tower money, yes.
This year.
It's sort of way along, I was fourteen a couple of years back, I forget where the right away was.
Some of the lighter money came from that too.
Yeah, yeah, I, there was, there was two things that was used, um, I'd have to go back and look at them. I do know it was put in for the special election, so, yeah.
Okay, anything further?
I also had a concern on the senior citizens, and you said that was justified.
Yeah, it was combining of two accounts.
All right, will we address this on the twenty-fourth?
Before we go any further, do you want me to so leave it as it is, um, or do you want me to present it in a different way on the twenty-fourth?
You could republish, don't you?
Because I, no, I don't have to republish, I just need to present, re-present, I have to go in and fix all the numbers. So I can leave it as is, and, um, we can approve it as, as is, um, it's just, it's up to you guys. I, I just need to know, because if you want me to present it in a different way on the twenty-fourth for your approval, I will need to know.
You can still change your mind, but you need guidance on what, what follow-up documents.
We didn't really, I don't change anything.
Well, there'll be a difference in expenditures with the insurance annuals, being essentially eight, eight percent less than it was.
Or you can just leave it at the five percent too, I mean, you can do that as well.
So that would cause you to rethink the assumption that there would be the five percent cost of living raise in there, right? And you would lower the insurance?
I was just, you could leave it as it, the five percent insurance, and then the five percent cost of living.
Not to be presumptuous.
Yeah, I'm just leaving it as it.
Four percent was talked about, uh, we agree on five percent?
Yeah, I did.
Wish, yeah?
Well, I guess I think that we should, uh, have a budget to approve that is reflective of the five percent cost of living and, and minus three on the, on the insurance.
I, I can do that.
Because I think that's an accurate budget.
Yeah, and that from what we would be expecting to expand.
Okay, I can, I can do that, I'll, I will get that prepared for your approval on the twenty-fourth. Okay?
All right. We're ahead of schedule, ten o'clock. National Resources Committee.
Bill and Mitch are here.
You need them?
What's that?
Do you need them?
Well, yeah, he was gonna be part of it, Mitch was.
I thought you were gonna be the speaker.
What's that?
I thought you were gonna be the speaker.
No, no. Chairman, you should have in front of you, uh, a document caption, the Lawrence County comments of the U.S. Forest Service overall draft environmental impact statement, consists of like five or six, seven pages. I appreciate Bill and Mitch, uh, uh, working on it very quickly and getting it to me on a compressed timeframe. I think the deadline was gonna fall between your meetings, and I was gone, um, last, at the end of the week, so they did a good job to present it to you, I appreciate that.
So, yeah, um, and I, I wanted, uh, let Mitch chime in on a lot of this, because he's been kind of bird-dogging this from the start, um, but we have got, uh, an MOU with the U.S. Forest Service out of the Washington office, uh, to be part of the overall, uh, environmental impact statement on managing old growth throughout the U.S. Forest Service's, uh, one hundred and seventy million acres. With that said, it, and this is just kind of a comparison, um, is that the fact that we were able to get a usable and, uh, a, a workable MOU with Washington office when we can't even get it with the supervisor's office is something about where we're at in the Black Hills National Forest. So I'm gonna let, uh, Mitch hit some high points about our comments, and then there's a couple other things I'd like to follow up, that have happened, that I think you guys need to know about, what's going on, that are pretty, pretty significant.
Okay?
All right, thank you. So most of you know, the old growth EIS was prompted by that executive order, uh, fourteen oh seven-two, which was signed about a year and a half ago, about by Biden, and it was titled strengthening the nation's forest and building, uh, uh, communities, something of that nature. A lot of that was about old growth, so that's what's driving this. They want it done before, um, January, before the administration leaves, so that is a, you know, concern, the decision will be signed by the Secretary of, um, Agriculture as the administration's walking out the door, so you've got to be kind of careful with that, what's gonna change between now and then. So why is this important for Lawrence County, we have some old growth, but not much as other forests? What's really important in my mind is that if you look at what happened in the California forest in two thousand and four, they did a EIS for most of the forests in the state, and a lot of it was tied to old growth. Spotted owl, but a lot of it was old growth. That effort was done at such a large scale, and everyone complained about it, even the Forest Service, that they knew it was gonna crash and burn, and what happened is ten years of litigation. And from two, two thousand, uh, ten to two thousand and fourteen, all forest activities were stopped because of litigation, mostly from environmental groups. There was litigation for both sides, but you can see at that scale, eleven national forests in that effort is just planning at too large of a scale, and when you're talking about a hundred and twenty-eight national forests from Florida to Alaska to Maine, whatever, uh, Black Hills, then you can see the complexity there. So that's why I think it's really important for Lawrence County, because you could see this stuff, this whole, um, projects related to fuels, related to whatever, stop, and it doesn't just stop logging, it stopped, the CERA framework stopped any tree cutting in or near old growth. So that's the concern there, and that's why I think it's important that we're involved. Also, I think it's important that we have standing, um, you know, Wyoming's really taking this very seriously. They've led the effort, and, uh, you know, there's pretty ra- uh, rampant violation of the twenty-twelve planning rule, Forest Service planning rule, and so, uh, I'll just go in on the, the, hit the high points of our comments and leave it at that, but. So we, we commented on the notice of intent very thorough, they included some of our comments, but a lot of the other ones were not as we expected. But our comments, um, on this draft EIS, which was released in June, um, the first highlight is that the need for change was not demonstrated, and a need for change required to initiate an EIS planning effort. They, they haven't demonstrated that there is a need for change. For example, a lot of forests already have old growth direction and Black Hills. In my opinion, what I see is probably better than most forest plans for old growth direction. It's titled late succession, but it's the same thing. So, um, that's, that's one of our main comments. The other comment is the desired consistency is not possible or even practical, given across the nation's forest, and that's pretty self-evident, everyone, including the Forest Service, but USDA or someone above them, uh, believes that consistency is possible, so it, that's pretty obvious. Cooperating agency involvement, uh, that's part of the twenty-twelve planning rule. Uh, tribes were engaged very early, had a lot of input into this, the counties were left out completely, didn't even know about it. Notice of intent released right before Christmas, and if you notice, we've all seen this, a lot of these big decisions or planning efforts are released right before a holiday, but, um, there was a lot of complaining, uh, there's discussion with NACO, and I, I do have to say, the Forest Service since May has done a really good job working with the cooperating agencies. It's been pretty impressive, they've had meetings, uh, at least twice a week, three times a week sometimes, there's been a lot of back and forth, um, as far as getting the MOU signed, um, they wanted to keep it simple. They got, um, I don't, I don't know how many counties, but approaching eighty to a hundred counties all signed on. And so, um, it, it's interesting, um, I went to the field trip in Laramie in July, and the deputy chief talked about cooperating agency relationships, saying how they're special, we can share things that we wouldn't share that might be pre-decisional, we can work with you, you have a big influence on the decision-making, and, um, we need these type of relationships, we value them. And a lot of other things that the forest supervisor, um, is saying the exact opposite. So I find that very strange, and there's no difference in this old growth, um, MOU cooperating agency relationships, it's the same regulations, it's just at a different scale. This is a scale with the Washington office, but the regulations are exactly the same, just want to make that point.
Mitch, that's important, so when you're talking about the deputy, the deputy chief, that's of the entire USDA, right?
Number two, and.
As opposed to our forest supervisor from the Black Hills National Forest, just to put those relationships kind of in, in, in order, does that make sense? This struck me when you, at, at your last National Resources Committee meeting, hearing that as well.
Yeah, I was, I was flabbergasted to hear that. So the deputy chief's up here at the Washington office level, number two, and then you got the regional office, and then you got the individual forest, so, um, that just kind of highlights the concern we have with the cooperating agency process. A lot of these counties in Wyoming, uh, in Nevada, a lot, you know, they had conflicts with the Forest Service in the past, and some bad feelings, you know all about Nevada and roads, the Forest Service, but they signed off on it, and, you know, these conversations are, um, during these Zoom calls are, they're pretty awkward and kind of, you know, to the point, but everyone's remained professional, and it's, it's exact, exactly what you envisioned with this process. Just want to make that point, um, I know we're short of time, so, um, our other comments highlighted environmental impacts, economic considerations, which I think is a big hole, they haven't even scratched the surface on economic impacts, and there's really no way to know for sure, the true economic impacts, as I brought up, what happened with the CERA framework where projects were stopped for four years? How do you evaluate that? Everyone says the risk of litigation is very high, including the Forest Service. So they have dismissed the environment, uh, economic impacts, it's saying it's really not gonna affect, um, the wood products industry. There's no quantification, and at an EIS level, you expect that some numbers would be used, a range of numbers. It's supposed to be a very rigorous environmental assessment or impact statement. They haven't done that, they provided a lot of economic background, what's happened in the past, they haven't tried to look at, um, economic considerations, and that's a big hole in it. The other thing that I think is, um, really, really important, logging was not addressed as a, as a threat. Forest Service BLM did a big threat analysis document, all these different managers, scientists, et cetera. They concluded that, um, the biggest threat was fire and disease. Logging over the last, say, uh, thirty years, was it, not a big threat.
Five tenths of 1%.
That's because of the existing direction to protect the old growth. And yet, in the EIS, they do not list fire as an issue. They list logging as an issue twice. And I, I have a lot of concerns with that. First of all, it doesn't follow any logical process. An issue has very legal ramifications. If you address something as an issue, you're obligated to take actions, to develop actions that will mitigate that issue. If you're going to cause erosion, say, and you identify that as an issue and then you develop your plan in the EIS, you need to address that issue. Well, they have addressed logging twice. And what it does, it creates a situation where, makes it wide open to litigation from the environmental groups. And so in the alternatives, they have one alternative that does not allow commercial logging. And the Forest Service deputy chief said, all that means is there won't be a scheduled rotation, prescriptions and all that for logging in old growth areas. But that's not what they, they say no commercial harvest. And to the public, to everyone, that has very specific meaning. So there's, there's a big litigation risk of locking this up by the environmental groups because we have logging as issues. And if they select the preferred alternative, which allows commercial harvest and logging, then the environmental groups are going to say, wait, you addressed logging as an issue twice and yet you're going to allow it. You've got this other alternative here that prohibits commercial harvest and logging. Let's pick that. So the Forest Service has, the preferred alternative is not terrible, the way it's written. But when you, you have an administration about to walk out the door and Secretary of USDA, you know, he can sign whatever he wants. And this is what they've seen on some of the oil and gas stuff in Wyoming is that they'll flip. You take Southwest Wyoming, that Rock Springs area, they developed an EIS for oil and gas leasing that was very reasonable, had an alternative that everyone could live with, a lot of input. At the last minute, they picked the preservation one, which is really shut down any new oil and gas development in that whole Southwest Wyoming.
So Mitch, are they trying to get this done by the end of the year?
Yes, they say December or January. And they're, they're dead set up. We've talked, numerous counties have said, this is being rushed for political purposes. It's one of our comments. It's one of the main comments of other counties. It's, it's a completely unnecessary process when we have all this protection already in place. It's chaos inducing and confusion inducing because you stack, you stack restrictions on top of restrictions on top of restrictions and then you, everyone's confused. And the Black Hills National Forest employees are confused with both. The forest plan says this, this old growth says this. It's trying to be consistent with the old growth in Florida or the Louisiana Cypress Forest. It's, that's kind of where we're at. So I would have to say, this group, this team with Forest Service, they are really listening. They did listen to some of our comments in the notice of intent. Like one thing they included in the EIS is that there's a very big risk of thick stands around, thick stands of small trees around old growth that need to be spent. And that, they included that. They really addressed that in the preferred alternative. So other things they did recognize the cooperating agency relationship and got that going and then the vast differences in the old growth. So that's, I would like to ask, there are a couple typos and grammar, grammar issues on the last page, like to fix, mostly the last paragraph, but, but we can live with them if you don't want to change anything. Deadline, September 20th. So.
You didn't meet again before the deadline, so that's why we presented today. So Mitch, you're looking, and Bill, you're looking for authorization. Does this need to be on letterhead for the, the chairman signs? It can be submitted with those corrections made directly via email? I guess I'm not sure.
I would suggest a cover letter and highlighting these, these main points and then attach. I think, I'm sorry, but I ended up with six, Bill and I ended up six or six pages. So it's pretty long for a letter in my perspective. I don't know how the county likes to do it, so I'd leave that up to you.
Usually in the past, we've submitted them on letterhead, but if you're talking about like a, like a summary cover letter, like an executive summary, is that what you're, you're thinking about?
Yes.
Would you help me develop that?
Sure.
And then, so you'd be looking that, then they have the authorization of the chairman signing that when it's, when it's done?
So and you have this attached as an addendum?
Yeah. So moved. Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second for their discussion. Seeing that all those favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Both motion. Okay.
My thanks to Bill and Mitch for fast track.
I would like to just mention quick, and maybe Bill can elaborate, but there's some other things popping up that are very disturbing and almost like a cruise missile coming in. And one of them is the tribal MOU. And.
I don't know if you guys are aware.
What's the possible significance of that?
The chief, the chief came into the Black Hills last week and signed an MOU with the Great Sioux Nation for co-stewardship, co-management of the Black Hills National Forest.
Really?
Parts of it.
Well, the stewardship is for the whole thing because they're, but then there's specific areas that they're going to have a, a big hand in it, which is the area around Deerfield Lake and Black Elk. A lot of it talks about directly about the Black Hills entirely.
And in most resources.
Yeah.
I include most resources.
It's very disturbing.
Is that theoretically, and I don't know, does that give the tribes more of a voice than say the counties as a cooperator would? Or how do you think that would play out?
Co-stewardship would, certainly would.
Would be governor.
They, they would.
The state didn't even know about it.
No, it was a surprise parachute in and no one knew why the chief was here.
Governor, I mean, Senator Rounds heard about it, tried to get involved in it and basically the Forest Service rushed on the side.
This is a done, this is a done deal or?
Yep, it's signed.
It's done, signed. Have, hasn't been in the.
Right up the street.
You'll see it come out, but I, I just, the reason I, one of the reasons I want to say this is because this stuff always happens before holidays and this was right before Labor Day. And when we get into Thanksgiving in December, watch out because we're getting at the end of the administration and you've all seen this. I'm not saying anything new, but watch out for designations or proposed rules or things of that nature. And I think our congressional staff are very on top of things, but they can't, you know, if, if the USDA and the Forest Service won't share. And a lot of this tying back to, they wrote a tribal engagement plan in 2023 and then they're tying it back to this, but they.
Just an observation, because we just went through with the old growth NOI, is that they met with the tribes significantly earlier than they did with the counties. Only after the counties organized and became, became quite a political unit, did the Forest Service then invite the counties and the state as cooperative agencies. And to me, again, these are the types of things that politically you have to be, have to get the counties involved, you know, and the state say, this is BS. Especially with them not even letting the, you know, the, the state know or our, or our representative. Hadn't been for Rounds, we probably wouldn't even be talking about it today.
And this is with the Sioux tribes, which brings up a whole nother issue and all across the West. So they want to do this across the West, according to the action plan. For some reason, Black Hills the first. But the, the trouble with it, it's with the Sioux tribe and then you've got the Crow tribe there in Montana with their ancestral homeland. You've got the Northern Tyan. And so they're left out of this. It's just with the Sioux tribes, which creates a whole nother set of issues because that sort of thing is present throughout the, at least the West where you have two or three different tribes with the same ancestral homeland. And, you know, you, there's, there's a lot of animosity in some cases with those situations. So it brings up a whole nother can of worms. And it all begs the question, you know, why can't we just work and get stuff done on the ground? We're doing all this stuff that sounds good. And I don't think they really understand the, the full history of the Black Hills or other areas. So.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Did we get that to you guys? We'll get it off.
Yep. Now, maybe that's the case. So they, they want to.
Okay, we're finished with that. We're down to the public comment area where we will allow people from the public to address the board. If you, if there is someone here that would like to address the board publicly, please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us today?
As I was here the last time that we met, I'm Ken Halsey from Spearfish.
Address, sir.
232 and a half Evan Lane. I have no need to add to what I had addressed the other day. I have property that I've owned since 1968 and.
We're familiar with your piece that your bid speak about.
Yes. And I would just like your consideration for some continuance of, of county maintenance on what I call the southern end of the Mount Roosevelt Loop because it's after that first mile from the end of Denver Street, it's almost unprohibitive or inaccessible to normal traffic at all. I wouldn't necessarily advocate year-round maintenance on that road, but I know that there will be and has been continual building on that adjunct property to the loop itself and that most likely will continue.
Okay, well, Will, we are in discussions on roads and stuff that we've been staying active with, so we'll certainly keep that in mind, Ken. I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you very much. And Bonnie mentioned the other day, you can pick yourselves.
Okay. Bonnie Halsey, 6100 Orion in Spearfish.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am concerned about the fire danger, that that road needs some maintenance. I guess I would also like to say that when you make improvements on a property that adjoins a county road, you expect that there would be some maintenance on that road. It has gone downhill in the last two years quite severely. I saw today's paper that came out and it talked about possibility of a secondary county road. I don't know all of those qualifications. I would like to bring it to your attention that that came out this morning and so most people really wouldn't have had a chance to read that article to, to address that issue if they so wish. And so just, just to realize, there's probably more than just the two of us that are concerned about maintenance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online that would like to address that board this morning? And seeing, seeing anything, we'll close the public comment with items from the commissioners that anyone that I should bring up right now.
I don't think, I just might throw in that Commissioner Sleep and I have been working on a schedule with the Forest Service for a quarter of meetings. So it looks like we'll probably have one in October and we'll sure bring up some of the, some of the items that we discussed here.
Okay.
I'm doing radio report this week, is that correct?
I think you are, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, word, Jer. Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to stop the recording, everybody. Thank you.